Okay, we're going to bring the January 13th meeting of the Revere City Council back to order. We're about to see a brief presentation from Mohegan Sun. Now, we've all heard a lot about this wonderful host community agreement that we have, but mostly all the citizens have been hearing about these great numbers. Tonight, we're going to see a little bit of the actual concepts and plans of what this building in this casino will look like. There won't be time tonight for questions to be asked, so there will be many of these presentations. Tonight's just a visual, so please just be here with us, and this is just so everybody can see what a magnificent proposal they have for us, and we'll have question and answer sessions at another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks to the council for having us here tonight. We wanted to give at least a brief update, probably have maybe 10 minutes or so that we can fill you in on several fronts. Actually, we have about a half a dozen fronts.
If I can just interrupt you for a second, just for the record, could you please give your name?
In fact, I am, and my name is Gary Luteritz. I'm a vice president for operations and development at Mohegan Sun, and with me here tonight is Peter Schultz. Pete is a project coordinator for Mohegan Sun. We've got about a half a dozen items that I'm going to just go over as an agenda briefly with you, but I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself a little further, and Pete as well, so that you know that we are accessible. We're here for you. We want to make sure you have our business cards. We're available if you need to contact us either by email or through a telephone call, and we wanted to make sure we had some visibility with everybody tonight. So please feel free, when we're done, make sure that we make a connection. I have been, I'm almost embarrassed to say, in the casino industry business for about 34 years, actually, I've entered my 35th year this year, and have spent most of my career in, on the operations side of the casino industry. So I wanted to make sure you understood that, in case there's questions about how we're going to operate and how we're going to function, I think I can be a great help to you in that regard. Pete has, is actually a member of the Mohegan Tribe, and in fact, he was formerly the vice chair of the board at the tribe, and so together, we think we'd make a pretty good tag team to give you just a quick update tonight. There's about a half a dozen items we want to go over, as I said. First, both the site planning that is underway right now and some details on what we're working out with the referendum. Pete's going to give you a quick update on that in just a moment. I'll talk a little bit about the fact that we have a gaming application supplement that is due, and we're working on that, as well as a surrounding community update, a little discussion about our points partnership program, and our gaming presentation, which is due to the Gaming Commission on January 22nd. So I'm going to turn it over to Pete now, and Pete's going to talk a little bit about our site planning.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, Gary, and hello, members of the council, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. As Gary stated, my name is Peter J. Schultz, and I am the project coordinator for Mohegan Sun, and I did serve as the vice chairman from 2000 to 2005, and that was actually a period of significant expansion at Mohegan Sun. It was actually when Phase 2 was undertaken, and actually during that period, the architect of record was KPF, Colin Peterson Fox, the architects that are building this project. So given that, I wanted to speak a little bit, give you a little bit more detail. I mean, Mitch has been up, and we had that wonderful event at the chamber, but we want to start to fill in some detail for you as we go down the road here, and I think, as Gary pointed out, we do this in a very rolling way and a very informal way. After I give this presentation, because some of the things I'm going to touch on here are hard to see on some of the diagrams, but we can spend some time on the boards, and I love working the boards, so to speak, in terms of that, and explaining the concepts of the project and how it's all going to fit together. Because this project is one that will connect with Revere and complement it. It will not dominate Revere. It'll connect and it will complement, in terms of the actual physical structure of it and the programmatic things that we're going to do, as in our points program that Gary will touch on at the end of this particular presentation. When you look at the site itself, the 40-acre site that we're here in Revere, over half of that site, over half of that site is going to be dedicated to green barriers, to green enhancements. This project really is a green project. That's what I want to really speak to you tonight about, and actually detail some things for you. In terms of the barriers, in terms of Winthrop Avenue, in terms of Washburn Avenue on the other side, and then we will look at our entrance, Thomas Sallow Drive and Furlong Drive, where that comes in on the western side of the property. That's a portico share that's going to be actually a landscaped outdoor building in terms of its greenery. The parking for the building, the parking for the project is actually underneath the building. There's actually a subgrade level that starts at Level 1, and we're going to go up on a three-level parking garage, and actually that'll all be, but you won't look in there and see cars. That'll all be bermed on Winthrop Avenue. There'll be native plantings up there, greenery that will mask that from view of Winthrop Avenue. The idea, too, is that that parking underneath the building, in terms of our impervious area for stormwater issues, that we don't have a large paved area, so we have that in terms of parking. On the right, the northeast corner of the building, over at Beauchamp Station, we're going to have something called, actually, it's a photovoltaic field, on the roof. We have, we're going to have 270 on-grade parking spaces there, but they're going to be covered by, for the want of a better term, a carport, but this isn't your average everyday carport. This is a carport that on the roof is going to have a photovoltaic field that will generate energy. It's going to be sized to 1 megawatt of energy that that can produce. Now, that's combined with our onsite gas-fired cogeneration plant that will also produce energy. When we get both of these systems online at once, they're going to be able to reduce our electricity use by 40%. That's pretty significant. So that's something we're doing in terms of the energy field. In terms of the actual project itself, if you look at some of the specifics, is that we have a 5,000-square-foot greenhouse. I love this. A 5,000-square-foot greenhouse that's going to be on the roof of the building. It's going to be growing vegetables that are going to be used at restaurants on the site with hydroponic technology. I was not going to be a Parks and Rec director before, and you look at that, in terms of, it's an educational event that we could use for area schoolchildren and recreation programs in the summer. It's actually going to be combined with that with a farm-to-table restaurant on the project itself, within the project itself. So you look at that. You look at our energy stuff, our parking spaces. We're also going to have, this is very interesting, too, talking about food. With Harvest Home, we've actually created a relationship, or will create a relationship, with Harvest Home, company down out of Waltham, Mass, and I would encourage you all to go to their website. It's pretty interesting stuff. And we actually do a version of this with a pigery, actually, at Mohegan Sun. We did this in the very beginning, too. But this is a new technology. This is very interesting stuff. This is a company down in Waltham, and what we're going to do is take the food waste that comes out of all our restaurants. Now, that's us, the casino, that's the retail corridor, it's all of our people there that are involved in food production. We're going to be, they're going to be trained to separate this food waste in a certain way. The company's going to come and pick it up, take it down to Waltham, and they put it into, for the want of a better term, it looks like a, like a storage container, like a very long, narrow storage container, but it happens to be airtight. So they get the material in there with a payloader, pack it in there, close it up, and they release molecules in there. It's called anaerobic digestion. And what it does is it actually breaks the material down and it creates biogas. Now, this biogas can actually be transferred into natural gas. So here again, in terms of energy, here's something else novel that we're doing. There's a lot of novel stuff with this particular project. This project is good stuff. This project, again, is here to complement and to be, and to connect with the community. So we look at that, and we look at actually, there's something even more mundane. There's a rainwater collection tank on the roof that's going to be used for our water system. We're going to do a gray water recycling system that's actually going to be fed by a rainwater collection tank on the roof. So you look at us, and you look at the, that's called the BMS, the Building Management System, too, that's actually going to be a smart, computer-driven system that runs the whole property. We're doing a number of things because we're going after a gold lead. A gold lead is a huge stretch for a company, okay? It's a huge stretch for a casino company to do that, but we're stretching for it, and we can do it. We think we can do it with this particular property in itself. I guess last but not least, certainly not last but not least, is the open spaces. There's going to be a lot of glass that lets in natural light. There's a lot of plazas, terraces. It's actually built on an Italian galleria. That's actually the format that KPF uses when they talk about this, that it's actually, all these open spaces, actually, there's a plaza that actually looks out onto a terrace on the north wall, on the Winthrop Avenue side, and this is going to be up high enough where you can look out and you'll be able to see Revere Beach, okay? Because we are looking to connect with the people, the place, and the history. Well, inside the building, there are going to be a number of spaces that are going to be public spaces for art, where art will be displayed. Now, one of our development partners, Todd Fernard, has a relationship with the School of Museum of Art here in this area, but also, we're looking at local art. We're looking at local art from Revere. We're looking at local art from the region, in terms of something that being displayed in the property. So we're really looking at a very different use here. This is a very different use, and even our design, you know, it's been made fun of to say, oh, it's like the Jetsons. It's a curve-or-linear design. And actually, when you look at those portico shares, what they are modeled after is parasols, parasols that were used on Revere Beach, and actually, you'll see that thematically inside the building, in terms of when we actually get down to that point. So we're serious about what we do in terms of taking the local community and bringing that into the project. That we're going to, it becomes, to me, it becomes an easel. It becomes an easel for you to tell your story. It's not about us. It's about the project. It's about you. It's about your story. So that's the project, or some of the things that we're going to be stressing, and actually, where we're going to stress these is actually in the award parties, you know, we get out on the ground and start talking to people, and actually using the boards in an informal way, and really starting to talk through some of these things. And I think that's, that's good because it'll create knowledge about, about the project and people can, I think, green is big. I think green is big, and actually, here in Revere, from what I understand, what people have told me, that green is important. So that's the project. When it comes to the referendum where we're at, is that we have an office, and we're actually moving into the office tomorrow, and it's at 91 Hutcheson Street. It's actually off of Route 60 here, just down from the hotel. It's the Cornetello Agency. We have like one half, so we're going to be renting that over the next five or six months. We'll be moving in tomorrow. By Thursday, you know, my IT guy, I had to, if it's not cloudy and the moon is in the seventh house, he's going to show up on Thursday and connect us, you know, God willing. So hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll be up and running, in terms of that. When it comes to this week, we actually are starting with the referendum. We're going to Beauchamp VFW. That's Thursday at 6:00 p.m. I think that the event is from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Now, ironically, even though he didn't mention this, but Gary is a veteran of the U.S. Navy. I'm a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, and then we'll be joined by our chairman, who's Kevin Brown, who was a veteran of the U.S. Army. So I think it's kind of, it's almost like, boy, that's telling, right? That our very first event is going to be at a VFW, and here we are. Well, that shows you, we don't preach it, we live it, we do it, we've done. So that, that's what we are. We're not, we're not corporate people, you know, parachuting and from Las Vegas. We're not. We come up on the train, and the train breaks down, and we get stuck. We're here in rental cars, in our own cars, et cetera, but, but I think we can connect. I think we can connect with the community. I like, I like this community. So it's got, I think, I think we're off to a really good start, really. So hopefully, we're going to, we're going to be doing that on Thursday, and then we have, I think, February 3rd is our first jobs event, and that's being formed up as we speak. That's going to be at the Wonderland Ballroom, and that is, our fellows from down there in Mohegan Sun, our HR director, Don Trello, will come up with about five or six different employees, and what they're going to do, and there's about 350 people already signed up for this event, and that's the 3rd of February, I think it starts at like 5:30 over at the Wonderland Ballroom, is they're going to explain what it's like to work at Mohegan Sun. This is not, it's not a scripted thing. It's not a thing with 5,000 PowerPoints. These are five or six people that talk about what it was like for them to come to work at Mohegan Sun, and what it's like to work there. So it really gives people, you know, you know how people are when they meet each other in the hallway, you know what it's like to work there. So that's actually what this does, and it actually works, we did it, you know, in our previous life, our previous iteration out there in Western Mass, and it actually works very well in terms of connecting with people. So that's our working at, and then the very next day is our working with, which is our vendor event, as the mayor keyed into. There's a number of things here in terms of development for the city, in terms of jobs, but also vendors, you know, in terms of what we have to buy here in the city. There's going to be, the next day, there'll be a vendor event, and that's from 12:00 to 2:00 with a location to be determined. Nothing has happened yet in terms of that. Then we also have, I guess, next Tuesday, "Delicioso"? Is that how you say it? I got that right. Okay, so there's an event scheduled there, and that's an award party, also, I think, Ward 2? Yeah.
Ward 2.
So that, that event is scheduled, and then we're going to, they're going to be rolling out as the week goes on. So we're launched, you know, we have, we're getting all of our systems together. I think we're off to a good start. You know, the fellows tell me that, you know, they're starting to phone bank, they're starting to do those things. So I think we're off to a good start, and I just, we just got to keep it going, and like, keep communicating, and if you have any questions whatsoever along the way, give me a shout. I mean, it doesn't matter, any time of day, Gary and I both know, we, you know, we go back and forth 10:30 at night, emails and stuff, so we don't tend to get up early, though, but anyway, so. But I'd be more than happy to help you, and also, if there's any questions about the boards afterwards, you know, they'll be down there, and I'd be happy to spend any time with you to explain some details to you. All right, Gary, to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I won't take up too much more of your time. I wanted to let you know that we are working out several fronts now, and I won't mention them all tonight, but there are several more fronts I just wanted to update you on. One of them is, as I mentioned in the agenda, we are, by the middle of December, the Gaming Commission, as we were coming to a close on our application, added about 37 supplements to what we needed to submit as part of the application. So we have been diligently working on that since December 31st. That's required to be submitted on December 21st, and it's addressing issues from geographical maps and the surrounding area to some of the problem gambling metrics that they wanted to know about, to a whole host of other items. So that's one of the things that we've got our team putting together right now. We are actively engaged in discussions with the surrounding communities. We certainly have designated several in our initial application, but there are a number of communities who have come forth. As of today, they needed to officially designate themselves with a commission as a surrounding community, and then we have, we will have some time to respond to that, and hopefully we can work out this amicably with all the surrounding communities. I mean, the whole region is important to us, and you heard the mayor, for example, say that, you know, we'd like to see 75% of the jobs come within 15 miles of Revere, and I think we can do that, and I think there's, there's that kind of economic benefit. There's a great deal of expenditures that we're going to make that I think benefits those communities as well. So I think we'll be, we'll be able to come up with some agreements that make sense for everybody involved and hopefully lift the whole region in the process. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. And that is through our business points partnership program. You know, we've had some discussions with Boston, particularly as it rates, as it relates to the Convention and Visitors Bureau there and the MCCA. I really believe that Mohegan Sun in Revere is going to become a bridge to tourism, to the whole North Shore. We are going to be connecting with, we first off are a sales tool for the Convention and Visitors Bureau to actually bring tourism into the, into the region generally, you know, because we become an add-on, you know, a half-day convention that takes place as part of a larger convention that's, that's already underway in Boston. That leads to maybe a room block at Mohegan Sun or at the hotels and other lodging here on the North Shore. That leads to visitation at our property, where we will be displaying all sorts of attractions and business relationships through electronic kiosks and in-room videos and all sorts of advertising of that type, and we're going to enhance that in what I think is going to be a huge way. And I know you've heard us talk about it before. I wanted to just talk about it a little bit further today, and that's this points relationship, this points program relationship that we have. Like all casinos that have been operating for decades, we have a rewards program, and that rewards program allows people to earn, in most cases, we'll call them points, and those points have value. And forever, those, that value has been redeemable at locations within the casino itself. There have been some companies that have trickled out some, some of those points values into a local hotel on a very one-off basis, but this has never been done to this magnitude, to my knowledge, anywhere in the United States, or elsewhere, for that matter. And that is where we're going to take these rewards, and we are going to allow our patrons to take that card and use that with every one of our business partners out in the community. I don't think that our businesses in the area that we've been talking to, although we've had about 100 of such businesses sign an interest form for us, have really grasped what this means yet. We're talking about tens of millions of dollars, not just the 10 million that we've decided that, you know, that we're going to work towards spending in Revere for expenditures, not the 50 million that we're talking about spending in the region for expenditures, but this is money that patrons have in their accounts, and it's going to be tens of millions of dollars. It may be exceeding $100 million that they're going to be able to use in these local businesses. And I think what will probably happen from this, as businesses, as retail businesses begin to catch on to the idea, we're actually going to be competing for those dollars. And if you're a patron, if you're a visitor of Revere and of Mohegan Sun, and you're able to see the attractions in the, in the area from the visuals that we'll have on property, that's going to bring you out to the local restaurants in the community. That may take you to a nearby lodging area in your next visit to the area. So we think this is, this is monumental, and I, and I would like our business community to really understand it, because I think, I think once they start to get a, get a hold of it, this can be a big, big boost for all the businesses, the retail businesses in the area. The last thing I want to just mention is that we, we have been working on a, a presentation to the Gaming Commission that is, in essence, a formal presentation to the Commission on January 22nd that follows our RFA 2 gaming application. We've spent a lot of time on this. We want to make a good presentation to the, to the Gaming Commission. We think it gives us an opportunity to highlight the fact that we are an outward-looking facility and an outward-looking company, and we want to be part of the community, and we want to be able to express that formally in front of the Gaming Commission. This is our opportunity to do that. So that takes place a week from Wednesday. We think we're ready for it. We thank you for, for the support that you've shown throughout this whole process, and I just want to end by thanking you for having us here tonight, and I hope you'll have us back. We can keep you updated to, to whenever you would like us to.
You'll be back more than you wanted.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, that was the final recess of the January 13th, 2014 Revere City Council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number three, adoption of the City Council rules of order for 2014 to 2015.
All in favor? All opposed?
Mr. President.
Counselor Penta.
I just, I don't know, I threw you to the clerk, if this is legal or not, but last week when we voted for president, I just got caught up at a moment, and I did not change my vote. I don't know if I can legally at this time or not, but...
Counselor, unfortunately, you won't be able to change your vote at this time.
Okay, I apologize for that.
That's fine. I know you, you're there in spirit. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number four, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Neil Shea Jr., 909 Revere Beach Parkway, Revere, Mass. as a constable.
That will go to the Appointments Committee. That's not quite assigned yet. The committees will be finalized this week, and, but that will go to the Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Cynthia Tallis, 936 Winthrop Ave., Revere, Mass. as a constable.
Again, Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number six, communication from the Election Commissioner relative to the approval of exemption in order to employ city employees on election night.
Motion placed on file.
No, we have to vote on this, I believe, don't we?
Do we?
Yes, ask me to vote on it.
Withdrawn. Okay. Roll call.
Roll call on the exemption to employ city employees for election night. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gennaro.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Pach.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. The exemption has been approved. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor require Wonderland Dog Track to clear the snow from the sidewalk bordering the property from Sharmont Street to the pedestrian light at the parking garage during snow events.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there are many residents in the area who live down on the end of Lower Revere Street there, Sagamo, Sharmont, Dunn Road, that area down there, that have to get up in the morning and go to work, and that doesn't stop if it's snowing, they still have to go. So this motion, I'd like to amend this motion, add also onto it that they not only clean the snow along the sidewalk from that Sharmont Street to the pedestrian light, that Wonderland Marble, which is not in business down there anymore, I understand, but they still own the property, be required, along with the city of Revere, to clear that sidewalk after everybody just plows, or snowplows, just plow the snow in there, and it, and it, people have to walk out on the North Shore Road to get to the T station. I certainly, I don't think any of us would want to see anyone down there injured by a moving vehicle, because we were negligent in requiring the snow to be cleared, and we allowed that to continue. So I hope this motion will be addressed by the mayor as quickly as possible in the event that there is another snowstorm forthcoming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Anybody else on this? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor require the DPW to clean the snow on the sidewalk at the pedestrian signals at North Shore Road and Revere Street.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is another area where kids living in that area down there, Bay Road, those streets down there, have to cross North Shore Road to get to the Parri Ver School, and I would hope, I would hope that whether it be our DPW or the mayor requires the State Department of Public Works to clean those areas around the pedestrian lights down there so that kids can walk up there without being endangered by moving vehicles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else on this motion? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request Mass DPW to seek reimbursement from the bonding company regarding the construction site at the corner of Linway and Rice Avenue. Make arrangements to have the area reseeded as well. This needs to be done because of the damage caused by the construction company.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I don't expect them to go down there tomorrow morning and reseed the area. That would be ridiculous, but the history of that is that there was a company hired by Mass Department of Public Works to redo the General Edwards Bridge, and unfortunately, after they got halfway through the project, they went bankrupt, and a bonding company has stepped in. I did, I was successful in getting them to remove the dumpster and the other materials stored down there, construction materials, but I just don't want to see this fall by the wayside. I'd like to see that, that the bonding company or whoever is responsible through Mass Highway in the springtime, they get down there, they regrade that and reseed it. It's not a big job, but it's an important job aesthetically for the residents that live down there in that section of the Point of Pines. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Novoseltsky that the mayor include in the next FY 2015 DPW budget, three laborer positions or more. These positions must be located in the DPW to work on much-needed services within the city of Revere.
Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, everybody knows that I, we're all trying to get more for our DPW, and we all know...
And we all know that they are probably most aligned, misaligned departments in the city, and always the, the bridemaid. And I think it's about time that we showed as a group to the mayor that we are willing to accept more positions in the budget in this department, specifically for this department. I'm, I'm only asking for three, and I think I'm being reasonable with three, but if he feels he can find more money to hire more. But we're looking for people, for bodies to be down the yard and to go out in the street and show our residents that work is being done, and to the, everybody's best ability. I know the guys work many hours now trying to get things done, but they just run out of time. So I would hope that this body approves this, votes in favor of it, so we can tell the mayor, put it in the budget, and we'll pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't even agree with the counselor anymore. I mean, I, how do you agree with him? The only thing, look at the motion, unfortunately, we can't add to the budget. I talked to the mayor about this on a weekly basis, and he'd like to put 20 down there. That department has been shut. We had a police department at 118 people at once, it's down to 98. This department had 130 people. It's down to 20-something. I'm all for it. I mean, I think they need more than the three. That's my opinion. If the mayor came and put more in, but I, I mean, as far as the motion is, it's moot, because we cannot dictate to the mayor how to spend money. We can only cut and not add. But there's no question, I agree with the counselor wholeheartedly, that, I mean, any given day, somebody calls out sick, something happens, someone's moved from one department to the other, sidewalk department to water department, water department to, to whatever. I mean, they just don't have enough men. And unfortunately, I think it probably is well-needed. I'm gonna vote for the motion, even though, you know, I don't think it, you know, and hopefully the mayor puts even more than this. But I know I talked to him, and he wishes he had 20 people. I mean, and I know as a ward counselor, as Counselor Novoselfsky, we take the brunt of it when things don't get done. So I know where he's coming from this. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent motion, and I realize, as Counselor Penta does, that, you know, money is very scarce. It's something that is gonna require a significant amount of funding, probably in excess of $150,000. However, I also, at this time, would like to take this opportunity to urge the residents of this city on February 25th to go out and make that vote, because that's the only way that we're gonna be able to increase the staffing at the DPW, put more police out on the street, and provide more public safety through fire and other vehicles in, in the city. So again, it's so important that we do that. Again, I want to compliment Counselor Novoselfsky. I think it's an excellent motion. But I think if, if this casino was built in Revere, that we'll have more than 20 people down, more than three people down there, more likely the mayor would be able to put on 20 young, able-bodied, capable men, capable of doing the work that's required on infrastructure and sanitation and other issues in the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little bit lukewarm about this motion, not because I don't see the need for three additional workers. Everybody knows that Donny's struggling down there. All you have to do is take a ride around the city, look at all the potholes that need to be filled, and you have to wonder how the heck he's gonna find people to do it. It's gonna be a huge issue. It's been a huge issue. It is a huge issue. But having said that, everything's relative here. If we have the money to do it, I'm certainly in favor of it. I'm just not in favor of suggesting that regardless of what the cost is, or regardless of where we are financially, that we must do it. I vote, I will vote for this with the understanding that I'm not bound by, in any way, shape, or form, to vote for this proposal without having the opportunity to look at the entire, entire budgetary situation come, come this spring. So I am in favor of it, but again, with that, with that proviso. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Counselor Guanasso. Counsel Vice President, Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I raised my hand to voice my opinion prior to some of the commentary that was just offered. But as we all know, we, the mayor prepares this budget for us in mid-May, and by then we will know the determination from the Gaming Commission. It will give us full direction as to know how our lives will be charted from there on. So I think this is a great idea, and I think that it's mindful of the fact that even if we don't, or are not successful, some attention has to be given to the DPW for more bodies down there, whether they be men or women, because we certainly receive on a daily basis from our constituents needs of city services in this direction. So whatever we can do to put more bodies down at the city yard is a very important factor for our community. But I hope that in May, when we're talking about all that money that we're gonna be tossing about, that we'll have the luxury of maybe more, maybe 13 or 20 additional people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a great motion. We all know, especially as Ira just pointed out, we're all on this side here, we're all ward counselors. The DPW is very important to us. I got a lot of calls on the potholes. This has been a tough year for potholes. But I would like to, they need many more than three, but if we might amend that, the mayor see the feasibility in order to hire three, not stating that, you know, that he can, see, we can't tell him what to do.
It's a request.
It's a request. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a vote on this motion. Normally, I'd send this to Ways and Means, but I, I think we'll just take a vote on the motion and see what happens. On the motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think Counselor Patch put an amendment in.
Oh, I'm, I apologize. With Counselor Patch's amendment.
The mayor looked under the feasibility.
That, that the mayor see that it's fiscally feasible, I think, was his amendment.
Yes.
Yes. On the motion as amended. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Haas, that the following ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing. This is an amendment to the senior citizen property tax work-off abatement ordinance.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, you know, this is part of the senior citizens program. They work a number of hours. They're paid $8 an hour. It was originally implemented by former mayor Tom Ambrosino. And I think it's about time that we look at the cost 14 years later, and I like to adjust the cost, basically, as the motion indicates. And I'm just requesting a public hearing, and that's all.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion? Anybody else? Counselor Penta.
I think it's a good motion. You know, 14 years is a long time without anything going up. The only thing I, you know, sometimes you throw these things out there, and there's no money there. I hate to see this pass when we have 100 senior citizens out there, and all of a sudden we got 60 of them because of the money that's allocated. So I think there has to be a study on this, and what the exact cost is, and anything else. But I mean, I'm all for a cost of living for, especially for senior citizens. So I think, I think it's, our vote for it is gonna go to public hearing, and probably go to committee after that, so I have no problem with the motion.
Anybody else? I'll just take a second to say that I certainly support the counselor on this. We've, we've had the same discussion, I think, with the same constituents, Counselor Haas and I, and so it is definitely, it's pretty easy to justify an increase after 14 years. I think we're, we're well below what would be considered minimum wage. So we'll vote this to a public hearing. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky, that the mayor make arrangements to provide the members of the City Council with city-issued identification.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Speaks for itself, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that the mayor restore the fiscal year 2014 line item for office supplies in account 011114-540000 to the fiscal year 2009 level.
The motion speaks for itself, but I think Counselor Novoselfsky wants to speak on it.
Just a question, Mr. President, to you. What department is this for?
This is, this is the City Council Budget Office Supplies Account. For example, we just had, I think, 75 certificates given out to the cheerleaders. That's a cost of $350. That's that one, one line item. So that's what, that's what the account is.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Arigo.
I would make a, an amendment that we, we see, similar to the previous motion, to see if it's financially feasible to, to, to pass this motion and to, to do this.
Absolutely. I think, in fact, this, this motion went in premature. I had submitted this, but intended to hold it until I made the committee assignments. So it's gonna end up in Ways and Means when that's assigned next week. So I'm gonna put this in Ways and Means limbo until the committee's assigned. All in favor? All opposed? Point of privilege? Is that, is there no other motions? State your point.
I just want to thank everyone who voted for me, and I want to say that each and every one of us offer a unique attribute as a counselor, and I look forward to working with all of you, and I think we're gonna get a lot of business done this week, this year. So, thank you.
I want to thank you, and I want to welcome you, Counselor Morabito. No further business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? When are we adjourned till?
27.
Adjourned till the 27th of January.